I call this meeting to order. An executive session was held before this meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, contract, and legal matters. If you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Spring has sprung, I think. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone have any questions, discussion? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. At this point, we entertain any public comments on agenda items only. Do we have any public comments online? Nope. All right, number five. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes from... If it's all right, unless I hear an objection, we'll just approve the minutes from the February 11, 2025 regular board meeting, the February 13, 2025 budget workshop meeting, the February 20, 2025 budget workshop meeting, March 4, 2025 policy committee meeting, and the March 4, 2024 caucus meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Number six, presentation, we'll hear from Madeline and Olivia, the student representatives' report.
All right, this, oh, we got it right this time, first try. All right, it's great to see you all again in the month of March. Me and Maddie have been looking forward to this one because we have quite a few exciting announcements to make to you guys. First off, we're going to start with the A-Push trip. So if you aren't familiar with the A-Push trip, Mr. Schepler has an AP US history class, and every year he takes them on sort of a four-day trip to either Boston, Virginia, Philadelphia, or Washington, D.C. This year, he chose to take a trip to Boston, which is about like a six-and-a-half-hour drive, so it was definitely a hike. But I was fortunate enough to be invited on this trip as an alumni of A-Push, and I thought it was really impactful, and I really enjoyed it. We did quite a few things. I mean, each day is sort of jam-packed with as much history stuff as we can get in, and of course, some fun stuff as well. Some of the highlights for me, we visited the USS Constitution. I don't know if anybody's seen that, but I thought that museum was pretty cool. And we also did a scavenger hunt around Boston, in which teams of us competed to visit the most locations. And I regret to inform you, my team did come in fourth, but it was very cold, so caught us some slack, I guess.
All right, as disappointing as that loss is. Also, coming up, we have the start of spring sports, and that entails baseball, softball, and track. And I think softball had a scrimmage today. I don't know if they won or lost. Anybody? They won? Okay, I'm not surprised, but congratulations to them. So, spring sports, that's exciting.
Our Alicia Lenker floor hockey tournament is this Friday, and if you're not familiar with that, that's basically a big overnight fundraiser in which groups of our students will break off into different teams and sort of play floor hockey tournament style. It's a big highlight of the year for most of our students, very fun, gets a little bit crazy as the night goes on, but that's the fun in it. And as you can imagine, the week leading up to it is very, I don't want to say intense, but you can tell everybody's ready to play.
Also happening this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is the musical Anastasia. Show nights are all seven, except for Sunday, that's a matinee, it's at two. So tickets are $10 at the door. Be sure to come out, it's going to be great.
Two Fridays ago, February the 28th, was our annual mini-thon, and I have a great story to tell about mini-thon. I'm the treasurer of student council, so I was involved with sort of the planning and sort of establishing the event and running it. And I know we started off the event, you know, just right through the gate. We had a bunch of people come. I think we broke, I don't think we broke the record for attendance, but I know that we broke our record from last year. And we just played a bunch of different things, like, you know, mini-floor hockey tournament, we had a volleyball tournament, I ran a half-court shot. We had different activities throughout the day, such as hair cutting, where individuals could get their hair cut and donate it to kids with cancer. Maddie was one of the people that did that, and I am very proud of her for doing that. I know she was nervous, but it was for a good cause. And I'm very happy to announce that despite the struggles we've had with raising money this year, we broke the school record for money raised for mini-thon. Our new record is $18,861.47. So, special shout-out to the club and any of the donators who helped us achieve that goal.
Also, a shout-out to Brayden Law for being Mr. Mini-thon, that's super cool. So, something else that I'm very excited about that happened just last week was for Read Across America Week. So, National Honor Society did something new this year, where we had every day, two students would go down and read to the kindergarteners and first graders, and they could bring books that were like childhood favorites of theirs, or Mrs. Grose had a selection as well. And this was just a really cool way to engage, you know, the high schoolers with the elementary school students, and I think everyone really enjoyed it.
Principal Advisory Committee had a meeting yesterday in which we talked about a number of things. The advisory committee is sort of a group of students selected by Mr. Funk, and the goal for these students is to sort of make the student bodies experience better here in the high school. So one of the things we talked about yesterday was our upcoming school board town hall, which I am very excited about. This will give students an opportunity to interact with the board and ask you guys some valuable questions, and me and Maddie will be moderators during this sort of event. So we just promoted attendance of that, and just telling everybody, hey, you have a question to ask the school board, now's your shot.
So our last item tonight is something that's coming up a little bit further in the year. We're not entirely sure of the date yet, but it's going to be a pickleball tournament. This is being run by National Honor Society, and it's going to be sort of similar to the floor hockey and volleyball tournaments, in that students enter to pay to enter, and it's like a doubles thing, and we're thinking of doing it in conjunction with a barbecue. And the idea is, we're going to raise a bunch of money, and then the winning team is going to pick a charity that that money is going to go to. So, we're really excited about it, and it's going to be the first year we give it a shot. So I think that's all we have for everyone today. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. The floor hockey tournament, did you say that that's this weekend coming up?
Friday.
And so is that on the same day as the musical?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Ouch.
And ladies, the town hall. We're very excited about the town hall as well, so keep promoting it. Even if they just want to talk about something, or tell us an idea that they had, or I wish we could do this, or whatever, like, we're really hoping students show up, and we're hoping, I don't know how it'll be at all, it'll be our first one, but we're really hoping it'll be informal. Because, you know, as we were setting board goals for the year and talking about things, this board unanimously, we wanted to know what the kids thought. We want to know, we only, we don't always get to hear, so we're open for anything. So, please, please tell people to come, talk to us, share with us whatever. You guys are the heartbeat of the school. It's really important for us to, to get a feel for what you guys think, so I hope, I hope you just really promote that.
April 1st, right?
Correct.
What time? 5:30?
Yes.
Okay, April 1st, 5:30, got it.
It's not an April Fool's Day joke.
And as usual, you guys do a really good job. Very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies. So we'll go on to finance. Treasurer's report is there. As far as payment of orders, may I have a motion, please, to approve the general fund, FNB prepaid for $1,58,161.76?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. Also to approve general fund FNB paid bills for $441,990.60?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Just, I do have to abstain for check number 872.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay.
Are we good? All right, motion passes. May I have a motion for the payment of the general fund MP paid bills for $739,023.25?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Excuse me. And the next one is going to be a roll-call vote. May I have a motion to approve the Capital Area Intermediate Unit operating budget for the 2025-2026 school year, which reflects an estimated contribution from the district in the amount of $14,978, and this is a 0% estimated increase from the 2024-2025 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Are we approving their budget, or are we approving our contribution to the budget?
I believe we're approving their budget, which includes our contribution. So in essence, what you're doing is approving both. Since we're a member of the IU, our portion goes into that, so in essence, we're approving their spending plan as our votes for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Can we call the roll?
Mrs. Walborn?
Yes.
Mr. Layman?
Yes.
Dr. Cattell?
Yes.
Mrs. Raven?
Yes.
Mrs. Singley?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Linum?
Yes.
Mr. Fry?
Yes.
And Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D, would any board member would be opposed if I read all of these and we voted on them in one motion, as opposed to taking them individually? Would we all be okay?
Please proceed with them all.
Yes? All right, so I need a motion to approve the following fund balance commitments for the 2024-2025 school year. $3,718,022 to be committed for, restricted actually, for Health Central South Trust Central, let's try this again, Health Care South Central Trust Reserves, restricted non-spendable. Number two, $5 million committed to future Peasars costs. Number three, $2,200,000 committed to future cyber charter school costs. Number four, $1,137,297 committed for future retirement or sick payout. $3 million unassigned, $2 million committed to debt service, $2 million committed to Special Education Reserve.
So moved.
Second.
Actually, I need a motion.
Oh, what?
Or did we make the motion?
You made the motion.
You were reading the motion.
So moved. Questions? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number eight, under capital reserve account, may I have a motion to approve moving $15 million restricted for the 2024 First National Bank Small Issue Bank Note for Capital Improvement Projects and Cumberland Perry Career and Technical Center Building Project to the Capital Reserve Account? I have a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yeah, so do we still have $15 million in there, or did we give any yet to Cumberland Perry?
We made one payment to Cumberland Perry.
So is there still $15 million in it?
There is not. The $15 million was assigned based upon the auditor's number that was received, so it's actually, it's $15 million less than the first payment. So what will actually be moved over to the Capital Reserve will be that number, but we're doing this because of the audit number that came out at that time.
But am I correct, the $15 million is the 2024 First National Bank Small Issuance Bank Note?
Correct. $15 million was the total amount for that, that small issuance bank note, correct? And the remaining of that proceeds minus our first payment that we made early on to Cumberland Perry, where the next payment will come into, in and around end of April, beginning of May, that will come out of the Capital Reserve Account.
So, you're moving it out of an interest-bearing account?
No. It's in an interest-bearing account.
Then why are we moving it?
We're moving it on paper, right?
So it's, we're just moving it out of the general fund and moving it to the capital reserve. But in this current year, some people recognize that in the Capital Reserve account, it's going to be reduced by the $600,000 that we paid, plus there was like, I think, $50,000 of initial setup fee as well. So, we're just going to man-
We're just going to ma-, whoa. We're just going to manage it through the Capital Reserve, as opposed to the general fund, because it's designated for capital projects. So we just need your approval to move it from the general fund to the Capital Reserve.
Yeah, 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 to move it over. I just want to make sure that it doesn't appear that I'm voting for moving $15 million. That isn't, that's not, there's not all 15 there anymore. But is it, is it the emphasis on the word, that it's the note that represented originally $15 million, and not that we're moving into this reserve account $15 million?
We're going to move $15 million, but we're going to take the $600,000 out of the $15 million. So what's there is left. So the only piece is the $50,000 that was part of the original construction of the note. That's the only kind of piece that might be in limbo, but we are going to move $15 million over, but I got to look into the $50,000 that. But the $600,000 is going to come out of the Capital Reserve. Even though it already came out, I'm going to move that over and take it out of the Capital Reserve as well. So your net, it's going to be?
When you're saying it already came out, this is what I have envisioned. Coming out means we've already given a payment to them, and it no longer is in our, in our custody. Is that what you mean by that, or no?
Correct. Yes, it came out of the general fund, but I'm going to do the accounting over in the Capital Reserve. So I'm going to move the $600,000 out of the general fund code 10, and I'm going to show it coming out of the Capital Reserve.
Okay.
As well.
Okay.
I guess I'm still not sure why we're moving it. Was that something that was recommended by the auditor?
So he's, yeah, he said that's the way to do it. They should have probably done it upfront, but we're going to do it now, so we're tracking that $15 million over in the Capital Reserve, as opposed of, out of the side of the general fund.
I think that makes sense, because when we borrowed that money, we listed specific Capital Reserve projects that we were going to spend it on, so that makes sense. Any more questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, can I have a motion to approve personnel A through H?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, I have a motion to approve Panone Engineering to assist with space analysis and redesign proposal, along with preparation assistance for bidding and proposal reviews at a price not to exceed $19,500. And maybe, maybe before I get that motion, Dr. Fox, can you explain that for people who weren't at our caucus in terms that, that makes sense?
Sure. The second part to a larger engineering study that was already conducted was several components of our building envelope, as well as overall, from each building, was identified as areas that we are looking at that need to have improvements made. So in essence of doing so, we would like to contract with Panone to see what the best avenue, from their, from their expertise, the best avenue to accomplish going out either as individual bids or a collective group, looking at the potential, if it's there and necessary, or there and would, would be beneficial to the district, anything under what would be called the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, to see if that would be beneficial, or individual, again, individual bids, based on individual items. And again, that's going through those practices right now as to the next step. And then the second step is, we still have some spaces here within the high school that we would like to look at based on some need. So there's some spaces that are being underutilized, that we would like them to come in and partner with RLPS architects, to look at what would a redesign, and how could those spaces be used differently. So we do have some really good spaces. It's just looking at that and doing some visioning exercises to see how those spaces could be best utilized now and in the future.
Second.
Any questions? All right, any opposed? Motion carries. And before we go any further, I want to go back to personnel, and I think, I just want us to take time to recognize the three retirements we have on here. Dawn Brosas, who's been with this district for nine years, Dr. Rosario Epley, who's been with the district at the high school for 19 years, and Kathy Forin, who's been with the district for 21 years. Especially, I'm going to miss Dr. Epley, as she started her career, we had an opportunity to work very closely together on a lot of projects, but it's a lot of years of service from these three people, and they're going to be irreplaceable, really. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge them. Okay, moving on to number 11, Penn Township Tax Collector, may I have a motion to approve Carol Brettz as the new tax collector for Penn Township?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the 2025-2028 District Comprehensive Plan?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, other than I would like to thank Krista Snyder, Mrs. Krista Snyder, or Ms. Krista Snyder, who did an amazing job leading the comprehensive plan, and really put out quality work, her and the team? Any, any other questions, comments? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Number 13, may I have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 board meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, may I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 323 Tobacco Use?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve $300 donation to be used for elementary school lunch accounts?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? I guess I have a question. This is an anonymous donation, correct? And it's just greatly appreciated when we have people who can't clear their accounts, can't afford, or for whatever reason owe money in the cafeteria, and we have community organizations and people to donate money to help us out. It's just greatly, greatly appreciated, so. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Field trips. Motion to approve the following field trips. A, eighth-grade field trip to Harpers Ferry National Historic Park, West Virginia, on April 11, 2025, to delve into early American history, to learn about the causes and consequences of the Civil War. They will miss one school day.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. And also the field trip, the National, Spanish National Honor Society Field Trip to Washington, D.C. on April 3, 2025, to visit the Latino Museum and American History Museum, which is part of the Smithsonian Foundation, and to have lunch at Hispanic Restaurant in D.C. They will also be missing one school day.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I'd like to give a little bit of a Cumberland Perry Area Career Technical Center update. I don't really have a whole lot to update, other than to say that the building project is continuing, and it's on track, and I don't know how, after all the, all the things, but it's continuing. All the necessary permits and things have been secured, and it was sent out to bid, and they're due to have bid openings at the tech school on March 18. And construction is set to begin mid-April of this year, after they have to secure some additional permits once the bids are opened, and they're still on track to have it completed in the summer of 2026. So they, the previous design, if I understood it correctly, was they were going to take down, I believe, the logistics building, they were going to build two different buildings, and they were going to try to reorganize things a little bit as more career cluster. So you have your construction vocational areas kind of clustered together, your health occupations clustered sorted together. And they're still able to do that, but now it's, my understanding, they're not going to be tearing down the logistics building, but they're going to be building one addition instead of two, they're going to build it larger, and they're able, somehow they're able to, by doing that, to reduce the cost, get it into, hopefully, that it will be bid at the amount that we all agreed to pay them. So hopefully, we have a meeting coming up soon, so hopefully, those bids will open and they'll be on track, and we can move forward. Any questions for me on that? Okay. Dr. Fox, are you going to give us a Susskwa, Nita Blackhawk Foundation update?
I'm certainly going to share it, so anybody who's, who's here as a member of the foundation as well. Just an incredible job, and thanks, you know, we'd like to thank the Blackhawk Foundation for their donation from Maguire's Ford. As you get a chance and you exit through, take a look at the video board scoreboard that is up. And right now, you know, it's, we're certainly looking forward to growing into this, this incredible contribution, and, you know, for us, it's going to, you know, we're going to be able to jog before we go into a full sprint, and we have this, you know, a really dedicated group and staff that are, that are going to be learning, you know, as we go, about the several features of the software. So thank you again to Maguire's Ford, thank you to the Blackhawk Foundation, and we look forward to many outstanding opportunities for our students, for the community, and for, for our student athletes, for this contribution. There is Sportsman's Raffle tickets that are still for sale, so please go ahead and purchase those. You can see Mr. Ward has a stack of those, and he's really willing to sell those. They make incredible gifts, so if you have some friends, or you'd like to buy one for me, please feel free to do that. We'd appreciate that. We have an upcoming meeting here, I believe, on the 20th, as we continue to work towards sustained goals that we have, and working for our next big fundraiser, which will be the golf outing following this.
Do we still have jars of dirt for sale?
I believe we can, if anybody is looking for some dirt, I'm sure we could, we could certainly find some authentic dirt jars that could be available.
For those of you who don't understand-
The price went up, though.
When, when, when we put on the turf field, and I believe this was solely Dr. Rubish's venture, they went out and collected dirt from the old football field before they covered it with turf field, and put it in jars, and are selling jars of dirt for, for those who played on that field. So it's not too late to buy one, they make good Christmas gifts, birthday presents.
It is authentic. St. Patrick's Day gift. Because Dr. Rubish actually did go out and, and he scooped it himself, so that is, that is true.
That adds some value.
Yeah, so, so I'm glad, I'm glad to see they're still out there. I'm looking at this meeting schedule, so take a look at the meeting schedule. We actually have a budget workshop meeting next week, right? Next Thursday?
Oh, this Thursday.
This Thursday, oh my gosh.
Two days.
In two days.
We'll be back right here.
And on the 20th.
Should we plan to see you there?
I guess so. So come on out, guys, and learn more about our budget, because it's, it's fun. I do see here, April 1, we have policy committee meeting, and I think that was canceled, because that's going to be, we're canceling that in order to hold the town hall meeting with the students on April 1, and then we'll have the board caucus meeting after that. So for those of you who are paying great attention to that, take it home, put it in the refrigerator, you want to change that. All right, number 20, informational items. Elementary school, what's a, what's a GBD DocuSeal 95? Whatever it is, it doesn't work, and we're getting rid of it. Okay. Board reports. Any board members?
I'd like to just, just kind of echo what you had mentioned with regard to our retirements, although we're always sad to see any of our teachers either leave to go on to greener or different pastures, or to retire, too, in this particular kid, me personally, and Dr. Epley, as you mentioned, Mike, has been a, just a fixture in this school, and in so many aspects, not just from Spanish, but the musical and everything else, and have been, has been a really important influence in my kids' lives. And- And Mrs. Foran was Rachel, who is now a freshman in high school, or in college, was her first grade teacher here. And so, yeah, she was very instrumental in kind of getting her into the educational experience in a young age, and very dear to our family. So they're going to be missed, as you mentioned, and very, really irreplaceable. I just have another question. I didn't know when to, would it be appropriate to bring it up? When the girls were mentioning about the scheduling of the musical and the floor hockey tournament, I don't know who to ask this question to. Historically, the floor hockey tournament was always held the first weekend of March. It was always held on the same weekend as the district swimming championships. I know this because my kids were always overlapping with it for six years. And it never coincided with the musical. Do you know why or why that was changed this year?
I can maybe speak briefly to that. I wasn't directly involved, but just kind of being in the high school here, it was a tighter window this year with the ending of winter sports. And they had to always hit that window between the end of winter sports and the beginning of spring sports, and it seemed to be the only weekend, especially with trips and everything else, that worked out. So normally, there is a weekend in between that they're able to do both, but just with the way things ended, and with the trips that we had last weekend as well, that was the only weekend that it worked. So they did try to work around, they went back and forth on it, but then that's kind of, they came to the idea that they weren't going to be able to find two separate weekends.
Yeah, I mean, I think the concern that I have is what I've already echoed. I don't personally like the idea that they're on the same weekend. I think it kind of takes 100 kids that are involved in that tournament that aren't there to support the musical. I don't like that sort of battle between that. And I would imagine that the spring sports started already. I know the track coach is probably not happy about 100 kids playing injury-laden floor hockey. So I would like to see next year, going back to that one weekend at the beginning of March, and not overlapping with the musical. I don't know what the other board members think about that, but I just, you know, there's always going to be something it's going to overlap with. I know it hit wrestling, and kids that were wrestling couldn't do it. Last year, my daughter swam in the district championships, stayed up all night, and then swam the 500 free the next morning with three hours' sleep. She did not drown. But, you know, I mean, there's those choices you have to make. So, but yeah, I just think that the overlapping parking you mentioned, you know, is going to be interesting, although those kids are there for the whole night. So anyway, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, I'll just quickly echo about Ms. Foran. Both my children had Ms. Foran, and she was great. Her communication was spot on, working with me, which we all know can be difficult, yeah, whatever. But the scoreboard, you know, that whole project, big shout out to everybody that was involved in that. Dr. Fox, the entire Blackhawk Foundation, Maguire's Ford, the Rohr family, and specifically Kellis Wexler, and all that she is doing with the foundation. It's just astonishing to see how much she's taken on and running with it and doing just a very phenomenal job. So I know that she doesn't want any kudos, we all know how she is, but she's doing great, and I just want to acknowledge her here for everything she's doing. And that's just one small project of many that she's making happen around here. So thank you to Kellis.
Any other board comments?
Do we have any admin comments? I'd like to start with Mr. Browse. Mr. Browse, I browse, yeah, browse. I went right over the treasurer's report, because normally it's just a report. But I know, normally in caucus, you go over the board summary, and I think we decided that we would start doing that. So if you wouldn't mind, if you want to take some time, go over that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. If you pull up the revenue funds, the ones that on page 1 start with the 6100, so it's the smaller of the two reports. So that shows our revenue year-to-date. So year-to-date, we received 82% of our budget revenue. You know, that's mostly because the real estate taxes come in earlier in the year. Obviously, there's still some to collect there, but a majority of it came in. We still have some state-related funding that will come in the rest of the year that should get us closer to the budgeted amount. But that's the revenue. Again, 82% have been collected. Jumping over to the bigger one, again, there's some categories in here that have some, you know, larger variances, one-line items and stuff like that. Some of it has to do with the way, where it was budgeted for in the system. We're still working through some of them, so there's a couple we can move around there. And then a couple other ones have to do with the way they're recording the expenses. Before, they weren't kind of netted with the revenue. Now we're reporting the revenue in one place and the expense somewhere else. So it'll be a more accurate representation of our finances. But if you just look at each category, they're all kind of pretty much in line with the 66.7% where that's how far through the year we are. And if you look at the grand total, we have spent 66.6% of our budget. So we're right in line with our budgeted expenditures year-to-date through February.
Oh, thanks. I'd just like to echo again the congratulations and our deepest appreciation for Dr. Epley and Mrs. Foran and Mrs. Brosas. Simply put, they are incredible, outstanding educators. Their dedication, commitment, professionalism is certainly a model for all of us to follow. And when I, I am personally fortunate to be around them and learn from them. At any point, you may rescind and join us, because you're just incredible, and I sincerely mean that. Again, if you haven't gotten your tickets, please get as many as you can. Let's fill up this incredible auditorium to support our students for the Spring Musical, Anastasia. Our students and advisors have worked extremely hard, and they're working at it right now, and they're going to be working and keep working. And Friday, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, come join me on Friday. I'd love to see you. Let's pack this auditorium. Let's support our students. As Matty and Olivia said, I think a kudos goes out to them and the student body for their outstanding support of Four Diamonds. It's not just necessarily, you know, just about raising money, but it's raising awareness for really being able to support an incredible organization that supports families in need at that low moment, giving them a sense of comfort so they can provide what they need, which is that care for their son or daughter. So congratulations. Every dollar makes a difference, and every dollar goes towards the supporting of families. The best of luck to our spring athletes as they start this season. Just a reminder, as I kind of walk through this incredible campus, and I walk through when there's an incredible amount of activities going on, be aware that our campus speed limit is 15 miles an hour. That's slow. And it's slow on purpose for the safety of all the students. There's balls that go out, there's all kinds of activities that go on. So please, please be mindful of your speed and watch how, and make sure that, you know, you are being mindful of that. Also, do not park along Schoolhouse Road. There's baseball games that are going on. Please park in the parking lot that is near the stadium. If you park along Schoolhouse Road, there's a high probability that you will be ticketed. A big thanks again to Maguire's Ford, to STSG, the Blackhawk Foundation, Kellis Wexler, Christine Mottash, for their work on this scoreboard project, and to you, the board. It's going to be an incredible project. We have a lot to learn and a lot to grow into, but that's where you want to be. You want something that you can grow into, not grow out of. Couple days we have, makeup days, mark your calendars, March 28th and April 17th. And kindergarten registration, I believe, has opened. Visit our website for information regarding the steps and processes. And please complete this step as soon as possible so we can get you scheduled. And we're going to be right back here Thursday. So join us Thursday at 6:00, as we look to put the finishing touches on our comprehensive review, line by line, of the budget. I believe we have maintenance custodial areas to go over, which is our buildings and grounds. We have athletics to go over, and we're also going to tackle, I believe, right, Mr. Browse, going over revenue, and any other further questions that may come before the board, or the questions that the board has. So please join us. Thank you.
There are no public comments online. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Are you sure? We got time? Oh, I'm sorry. We have an admin.
That's better. All right. I have prepared something. The middle school's been very busy with a lot of different activities over the past month since I was here last month. So I just have a little Google presentation of just some of the things. So I'm a visual person coming from elementary, so I like the visual piece. So we had the Best of the Blackhawks. Show respect, Rich Kiddo from a homeroom was nominated. Eighth grade began the process of course selection. I think that's going well? Okay. What I found very powerful was the eighth grade attended, from learning about Anne Frank and their English classes, there was a Holocaust educator who was on a Zoom with all of the kids. And when I walked in to just touch base, the cafeteria was silent. They were so mesmerized by what she had to say. So it was just a powerful event for those eighth grade students. Following that was Yest Day. That was new for me, junior achievement, talking about like interview skills, resume building, things like that. So kudos to Mr. Klingerman and Mrs. Shear for kind of organizing all of that. Really excited. I think Friday is our, no, yeah, I think it's Friday. No, next week, maybe. I can't remember. I'm sorry. We're doing the Read Across Sasqueta, a little bit different from the elementary. We're doing it in-school, the Wish Tree. And you see the kudos to all of those ELA teachers. So thank you for organizing such an amazing, like, powerful event. I just, I really believe in the power of reading. We still have some slots open for anybody who would love to volunteer to come in and read to any of the fifth through eighth graders. Please. This coming Friday is the Math 24 Challenge for kids five through eight. There were two more events, and I wanted to show the visuals of this. The student council, the whole building, kind of organized the Humane Society fundraiser. And as you can see in the visual, kind of, like, it lined the hallway of donations for the Humane Society. As you can see, there's over $500 in cash and gift cards, which is kind of, you know, astonishing, along with all of those items. And thank you, Ms. Levann and Mrs. Wilson, for organizing that event. When they dropped it off and visited the shelter, I know, it was just a really unique opportunity for the kids. And the shelter shared that they had just had a litter, like, a group of puppies from shelter in Alabama, and it was perfect for them arriving to send off with the foster families. And huge shout-out to the PTO. As you can see, they have raised enough money to fund a lot of our field trips for each grade level, so thank you. And as you can see, new basketball hoops and balls for playgrounds. So this was a first for the middle school, and a first for me. I have never heard of this. Some other districts have done this. It was called the Stall Day, and all the kids brought in any change that they had, and the first period one had to count coin by coin all of the totals. Well, the kids kind of had, like, enough time to just engage and be, you know, have fun with their peers. I walked into every single classroom in fifth and sixth grade, and I just smiled from ear to ear, because as you can see, the teachers had just as much fun with it as the kids. So thank you, PTO, and thank you, teachers, for being good sports about counting massive amounts of coins.
Thank you. And I also, I want to recognize the Blackhawk Foundation also contributed money to buying enough of the Wish, what was it, the Wishy Tree books to help, which you probably weren't aware of. But, and thank you. Dr. Fox shared with us the video you made with the kids getting into the limo with the pizza. I don't remember what that event was. What was that event? Yeah.
I tell we welcome all new hires.
So Dr. Fox did share that with us, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
So we have a question before you start. We noticed on the field trips that the sixth grade was not listed there. Is that because they're doing Biz Town?
That's the, yes.
Okay. Okay. We just want to make sure that poor sixth grade was not. Yeah, okay, cool. Thanks.
All right. And elementary, we just wanted to add, first of all, I did look up the Docu, it's our old laminator. Sorry, I didn't know that that was the actual name of it, so that threw me off. It was our old laminator that was broken. But one thing I want to do is just read across some upcoming events that are, to get out to the community. First of all, we want to thank our title reading group, teachers who have done our Read Across Sasqueta. We're into our second week of The World According to Humphrey, and the kids have been ecstatic with this and just reading. We've seen, Mr. Ward the other day was just saying how exciting it is to see the kids getting on and off the bus with their books and reading. So they have loved it. We even have two stuffed hamsters that go around to classrooms, and then they take pictures, and they're making a book about Humphrey in our building. So that'll be awesome. Kindergarten registration, April 10th and 11th. We had a really good pre-K registration night, had a lot of attendance. It was very successful. But please mark your calendars that April 10th and 11th will be our kindergarten registration. All of the forms are on our website to be filled out and give more information about that. We have a STEAM night coming up this Thursday night. So if you're interested to bring your family, it'll be 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the elementary building. So please come. I'll be there, and we have our whole STEAM team that'll be there. There's amazing hands-on activities for all ages and family members. And then the last thing to bring up, just because the Blackhawk Foundation was so fundamental in bringing this to our school, the Gamet Theater Performance is next Tuesday, March 18th. So our in-house theater resident has been working with fourth-grade students to put on a play. Next Tuesday, they're going to perform for fourth and third grade. And then we've also arranged that the media group team from the middle school is going to come over, film it, put together the film in a really nice, professional way, and then we're going to be able to show it to our entire school, put it out there for the community to see. So thank you, Blackhawk Foundation, for making that possible. The kids have been ecstatic about using art in a different medium than just your typical art classes. So thank you so much, Blackhawk Foundation, for providing that to us.
Yeah, that gavel to gavel was incredible, having the students do a synopsis of Supreme Court cases that impact education. So really, if you're in like an educational program, listen to those, because they are a great summary. I'm like, oh, yeah, that helps me refresh, you know, my, that's freedom of speech, or that's the idea of search and seizure. It was incredible, just really well done. So I was listening to those this weekend. As I, yeah, I like them.
Any other comments? Pressure's on, Mr. Page.
There we go. Just a couple updates. One, we are putting in the order, I should say, for the sensory room for the middle school. So that should go in probably tomorrow. I'm still fighting with them a little bit. Mr. Howe and I want to go down and pick up the stuff and save us a little bit of money on delivery. They're fighting me a little bit on that, so we're still going through that. Thank you to Mrs. Walborn. She came out and met with us and helped us out to organize an order for adaptive playgrounds for not only the kindergarten playground, but also the one-through-three playground. So the gentleman right now is kind of working out some mo- So the gentleman right now is kind of working out some mock, like, mock drafts, 2D mock drafts that I'll bring to you to take a look at, to see, you know, how we move forward with that. The good news is, is that both the sensory room, the middle school, and both the adaptive playground will be covered with access billing funds, so that we will just submit that to the state to get that approved for the funding. I know Mrs. Flowers has had this information, we did just get it out, unfortunately, but Career Link, rather, Pennsylvania Career Link, is doing a summer earn-and-learn. So they are, from July 7th to August 15th, they are providing six weeks of paid work experience, up to $15 an hour at 20 to 40 hours a week. So there is a date this week that, in Perry County, there's actually, in Adams, Franklin, Cumberland, York, Dolphin, Perry, and Lebanon, that they are meeting with the students, and they can sign up for appointments in which to go out and be interviewed by them. So, that is out on the website, but it is something that Mrs. Flowers has also been promoting to the students at the high school. It's actually ages 14 through 24. So that's good. This is pretty exciting, this just happened. Mrs. Flowers and I are meeting with Jeremy Hughes from Shield Driving School tomorrow. They actually have a program that they utilize students' IEPs, and in conjunction with OVR, are providing students with driving lessons as well as testing, and OVR will hopefully cover the cost of both for them. So I am meeting with him tomorrow, as well as Mrs. Flowers, to set that up, so hopefully we can get that out for the kids.
Happen?
I'm not real, that's one of the things we're going to work out tomorrow. I'm hoping that they can do it on our campus. We do have, back behind the middle school, we do have that parallel parking location, that that's where they can practice that, so I am hoping that we can do it here on campus to make it a little bit more accessible for the kids.
I believe that Mr. Lehman really, really wanted us to go to an executive session after this meeting, so the board will be going into, hopefully, a brief executive session. There will be no voting that will occur afterward. So at this point, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.